And I feel we should start at that number there. And then, you know, if you, uh, you apply for bond there and you don't use it all, you're only gonna get, uh, you're only gonna get charged not much use. But if you go for a smaller, you don't have enough funds, what are you gonna do?
My only, my only hesitation is when asked, we'll have to go back and forth. I can explain all this to you. But I would like to explain to you, you come to the open house on Saturday.
I'll take my hat off.
Okay, Bob, I'll just say municipal funding. The legislative body, which is the voters, vote per dollar. That's it.
That's right. That's what I'm trying to say.
If you want to suggest that we ask the voters to approve a ten million dollar bond, and we're gonna tell you, we can get you in that car for four and a half million. Who's gonna buy it?
Well, you should be honest with the people.
We are being honest. We think that three and a half million dollars is what this town can afford.
You can't guarantee that.
Fire station this year.
What I'm, what I'm saying is you can't guarantee that people will apply.
I can guarantee that we won't over exceed it. If the, the bond is gonna be what it is, and if it does come in under, we won't use it all.
That's why I'm saying whatever, whatever that figure is that he has inside. So what was that, fourteen?
Tried that the last time we proposed the bond, and the people didn't want it. Fifty-eight percent of the people did. Sixty percent was the threshold. We listen to the people. Trying to come in with a more reasonable fire station.
I'll keep my comments.
Thank you. And, and anyone with similar concerns, really, at, at this open house, we have tomorrow on Saturday, this, this weekend, and next weekend as well. Members of the committee on the fire department will be at station number two from eleven o'clock to two o'clock in the afternoon. And we'll be glad to answer questions. And I can go into more detail about that in those sessions. As to where we think some savings are, are here, or where the selectmen have identified some savings and so on. It's just not, what we're doing is, we're considering this figure. And that's, that's the figure that we're, we're gonna be asking about the fund. And the town won't be spending more than this figure. We'll get there.
Okay, so that's all I ask you to do, is send me that email out.
Send me that now.
That's, that's all I need.
I'll also try to explain. If you're not gonna be able to be there Saturday, then I'll, I'll, I'll explain what I know about where the cost comes from. So the cost is. And anybody else in particular who has experience like that as well.
Yes, I have other feelings like that. Steve Russell, Katie Wayne, Swansea. Uh, I'm sorry, this, the, this building has not been passed on in years. My concern is with the staff of this town. They've been subjected to those diesel fumes for years. And the potential of them going into retirement and getting cancer is just huge. Um, the reason why I know that is because I spent twelve years running the street to keep the danger. And in that street, I worked for fireworks to reduce the emission. When we studied that tube, I found out there's a pretty nasty stuff coming out of the exhaust. There are two things. I'm hoping we have an exhaust system built into that building. Definitely, if it's an injection system we're plugging in, when we take off, they pop out. But I think, hopefully, that's part of it. And then, you know, and this is a pretty cheap, realistic thing, but I would recommend that you consider putting in, in this funding right now for the state, a couple of electric vehicle charging stations, because eventually your vehicles will be electric. So I would encourage that, um, there's a fifteen million dollar grant program right now. They can, you should consider applying the same infrastructure to that building. It'd be a lot to these, maybe to retrieve them. So even if there's that becoming, that you need a light needs probably pickup truck that can slide in and get some juice while they're tidying the park. Couple of things, but I really support this, but it's time. I think, I would defer it to be in center Swansea. You know, somewhere there, but just not there. So, but, but I think this is a great possibility to not lose salary that I can. It's clean wood, and we're like one story. That goes a lot. Therefore, the both will understand.
That's right. Thanks for your comments. It is gonna be two stories, in the sense, no, but. And I, and the, uh, we do have the, uh, charge, the exhaust system. You're talking about as part of the cost. It's a little bit of a cost.
Good, good.
The charging system, they're not, but it's something like a third of the rates. Yeah. And I, I'll.
And we're also, we're also looking at the potential of those solar panels on the roof as an additional grant funding. They have the activation structure, it's, it's built to the business. Okay. Prescribed. Now, Bruce.
Bruce Caper, Constance, Swansea, I get it. Convent, I use giving the two hundred thousand congressional indirect spending grants and the other five hundred thousand and, and another one hundred fifty something, all they are is cash. With some chatter, her coming out of Convent, they don't be charging us that much. And how Convent, are we giving that money so we won't have to raise some of those things?
So the, the five hundred thousand is funding that the voters have saved over the last several years, so that's in the pickup, the trust fund. The two hundred thousand is a federal award that I think you received several years ago now, so it is secure. And the only concern is every year, wait, I hold my breath, I'm gonna say, Eric, we're gonna get into some nonsense. Swansea hasn't supported the funding, but as, as far as the last court is on it, it's still awarded. But we did make the language a little bit more general in terms of grant or other aid, because otherwise, we're too specific. And we didn't have a two hundred thousand dollar grant, you could knock it along, so we had a little bit more general. If you get another, some other funds, but right now, this is here.
Okay, so, uh, really, love to, love to see anybody who wants to come, talk to us on the Saturday.
Uh, so again, another long, uh, hard year that I will not read, we'll take you to read, but we'll, we'll give you the synopsis, so we'll sum up the third, uh, boner at home. But it's a town, the town's required to incorporate the full song, this limit six point four million dollars. It's based on a loan from the Hampshire Drinking Water Trust Fund, which would purchase and improve by a kind of the West Stormy Water Company. Just currently private, our utility, uh, the area around Route ten, we'll sit over there, we'll talk a little bit about the area, we'll get there. So we completed a grant funded study twenty twenty-four by Underwood Engineers, which was basically assessing the system to understand what it currently consisted of and what it would need to become a town, town system. Um, this article would have no direct tax impact in twenty twenty-five. And there's a few articles related to this, we talked about a little bit more. Um, but for a brief introduction, we have Ben Dryer here from Underwood Engineers.
So, like I said, we had studied, um, the last year, the West Swansea Water Company. Which maybe some of you are familiar, the private system, the small system, serving about four hundred people roughly in, uh, West Swansea. Uh, we can do the next slide, please. So the crack on the right is a service area, and the actual water lines, um, are blue. So basically, it goes up and down Route ten quarter to the north, can be next restaurant, that's just about reaches that far to the north, um, to the south, Andy's Pizza. Um, that's about the limits, um, of the system. And then, if you can see the purple lines out to the left and right, that's, um, the limits of, of how far the system could go based on pressure, which is driven by geography.
It doesn't actually go to those two north and south landmarks, but they are there for reference. And I know this picture's fat small, the whole report that ended, uh, is on the current website, it's under, uh, twenty twenty-five, top meeting information, so I know some of these visuals from up to see.
This, yeah, just trying to give you some, some general landmarks. So, so basically, the system, it has, uh, two active wells. There's a little orange circle in the center, um, that's all Perry Lane. Um, so that's, uh, currently supplying water. There's a third well that's inactive. But there's plenty of water in the aquifer, it's good quality water, um, so the supply is excellent. And so basically, also, I think you may be aware, or the, at certain times, this idea has come up before of if the town will take this over. Um, the current owners are expressed the potential to, to sell that, our interest to sell that possibly. Because of the way the system is operated, um, currently, there's no capital reserves for improvements. And because of the age of the system, which is basically nineteen, late nineteen sixties, we're going on sixty years now. Um, there are some needs that are required, um, in the near term. Basically, the high point to that is, uh, there's inadequate storage in the system. So that means, um, we're getting to the point where there's not gonna be any new service connections that can be provided because of that limited storage. Also, the fire flows are limited, so some of the hydrants don't provide the standard amount of water the fire truck needs, um, by fire. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so here, here's a po- photos of, um, the system. The photo on the left is pump house, uh, number one, so inside is, um, the pump for the well number one. You can see that in the photo on the right, the motor is the gray unit, um, that has a shaft that we down in the well, can, um, bring the water out. On that photo on the right, in the upper right corner, that's the storage tank. It's a ten thousand gallon tank. You can think of it like the, it's a hydromantic, hydromantic tank, like you have maybe if you're on a well in your basement. Um, and that's basically equalize the pressure in the system, so it's not kicking on, 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 so. The, uh, you can see the generator, and is the little yellow box in the front of the picture on the left. That does not have automatic transfer switch, so when you lose power, somebody from the water system has to come out, turn the generator on, so then everybody on the system is gonna be able to get water during the power. So just a number of things like that that don't meet modern standards, that need to be addressed. Okay, we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so here's some example photos of what, um, would be proposed in, in a summary of what's needed. Um, so I'll just go quick. Left to right on these photos, um, first one is just what a new pump house might look like. Um, modern construction would be concrete mixer units, um, some sort of copper siding. You know, asphalt type of roof. The photo in the middle would be what the, what it might look like inside. So there'd be new pumps and new piping, and then there would often be a new water storage tank. So we, you know, we'd have to look at the location where that would be, it may be, uh, steel, it could be concrete, it could be elevated, there's different styles, but that's to give you a sense of what that is. Um, so the kind of three main components, um, having broken this down, is the purchase of the West Swansea Water Company, um, that's estimated about six hundred thousand dollars. Then, the new pump house would be two point five million dollars. So that's new pumps, new generator, and a new building, um, for both of the wells and well pumps. And then, and then the storage tank would be three point three million dollars. Um, so that would provide the additional storage capacity in the system to allow new connections, and also would provide fire flows. Um, there's also a twelve inch, uh, water main that would, you know, connect the storage, um, tank to the system, um, as well. So, um, we'll talk a little more about the cost and the funding, but I think the message here to keep in mind is that these improvements are needed, like, period, in the near term. So whether the town were the ones to take this over, or somebody else, or remains as West Swansea Water Company, um, these are the improvements and the need and the price tag, um, that the system is facing. Next slide, please. All right, so, um, total project cost, six point four million dollars. Um, the town has been working, um, a, a couple of different funding options. Um, the current award is from, uh, Manhattan D S, King Water S R F. This is the low interest loan program. In this case, the S is offering forty percent principal forgiveness, which, um, for all the different projects and applications that we see, we have never seen forty percent, um, principal forgiveness, it's unprecedented funding offer. So they're really kind of giving, uh, this project a nudge or a boost. Um, in our meetings with the S, they're telling us, you will probably not see this again, um, especially, like, not next year. So it's, it's pretty unique in that way. Um, a little bit on the, um, I guess, the impact on the system, so, so with this, or, or the system users and rate payers. If this went forward, um, the typical residential water bill or annual, uh, rate would go up about a thousand dollars. So, so a typical bill right now is maybe, in, in the ballpark of six hundred dollars, that would become sixteen hundred dollars for the year. So, um, understanding that that is a significant increase, um, the town is really working hard to also pursue some other funding sources. So, eh, so additional grant funding, um, will bring that number down a little bit further. And also, we just pay a future increase on the overall municipal tax rate of about five cents per thousand. Um, that is for the hydrogen service, um, which is about twenty percent of the overall cost. I'll also say, in the handouts, there's a back sheet, um, that kind of breaks out some of those numbers a little bit further. Um, if you are interested in looking at those. Okay, um, next slide. So basically, you know, throughout, what if it passes, um, what if, what if they are okay? So, um, if it passes, then the town will provide safe drinking water and sustainable rating. This is, this is because of the planning, um, and the study that's already been done, the town has a plan on how to do this. It reduces the potential for unplanned impacts, um, to the system and user. So the, I guess the concern would be like, if a pump went out and it was unplanned because it's on its last legs, um, now the cost to replace that, and it would, could require a sudden increase in the rates. Um, so by planning those improvements, um, it allows the rates to be increased over a limited period of time. So the costs are managed through the funding opportunities. The town's municipality probably has one of the better, is better positioned for a number of different type of funding programs. It'll have improved management through, uh, transparency, public input. So you come to, uh, selecting meetings or to the town to draw your other kind of town business, so, you know, your water bill would be no different. There's also, uh, would allow for commercial, merchant development opportunities. Because now there'd be more capacity in the system to allow those additional service connections. Um, and it would be a modern facility, meeting the current and future needs of local residents and businesses. Uh, this would also expand the town infrastructure and, uh, manage, um, natural resources. So the aquifer is an important natural resources, uh, resource that is in town's own. Um, so what if, uh, the articles were fail? Um, the water system's gonna remain vulnerable to equipment failure and aging equipment. Um, it's gonna get out at some point. Um, there's potential for unplanned rate increases to address emergency system repairs if that equipment does fail. There's less funding opportunities for a private system than a municipal system. Private control, so it may not be as transparent. And future ownership, if the town doesn't take it over, who is gonna take it over? You, you, you may not know who that's gonna be, um, may not likely that's gonna be, I don't know. Lost opportunity for economic development, so those, um, new connections aren't gonna be able to happen until the improvements are done. And then, aging facilities are challenged to meet current system demands, um, so, so there's no additional connections. And, uh, as I mentioned on the last slide, you know, the, the state grant funding would be less if this was to be done in the future, or attempted again in the future. State statutes and RSA is required to your waiting period before the article is brought forward again. So realistically, it would be two or three more years. Um, and, you know, so prices will be higher, the equipment will be that much older. Um, so this would be kind of some of the challenges that, if they are. I think the message here is that, you know, the town is coming with the solution. If, if it wasn't the town, then who are to be? We don't, not aware of anybody screaming the table with that sort of idea or funding opportunity. So the cost will be higher, and there'll be less control.
Yeah, so as we wrap up on this one, so, uh, the authorization selected in our funds. Uh, and when you mentioned before, there's gonna be two other articles that sort of relate to this, one more than the other, hoping to get the discussion here. So if you have questions about the water company aspect, because of the system currently, or about whether the town potentially take it over with what they're trying to. This would be the time we're going to ask you to give back your money, next article, so you can start thinking earlier up here. Uh, so the other articles I just briefly mentioned, uh, is Article twelve, so the stadium has a process where the voters by two thirds vote, so this is sixty percent of the funding authorization, but two thirds vote by the voters to move forward with the acquisition. And then that period, you have the selectmen time to negotiate, but the discussions already happened with the other company, uh, already started. So then, if this passes, we would either have that a special, or we'll be ratifying the purchase, or at the next annual meeting, so it's like a two-part process. And answer your question, or?
Purpose line, so. What we would need, if this passes, we need another meeting to ratify what?
These were the town operating the system, so the borrowing is authorized by this article. But the other article, the little G later, Article twelve, authorizes the selectmen to start the process, acquire the system. The next, that needs to be ratified again. So basically, it's not easy, which doesn't happen, it's not an easy process to one-time vote to take over a water system.
So, this four hundred and five authorizes the selectmen to raise an appropriate money, which we're anticipating will be from the state revolving fund. If that doesn't come through, does that give the selectmen authority to vote elsewhere for this six point four million?
No, no, it's, it's specific to that one. Again, it kind of cruised over the line, which is a lot, but if you look at about page six of the handout, it's specific to the security work, safety law, well, it's a forty percent.
Additionally, to help the others. So. Okay, so here's some of the. So. I have a question. I was told by a former sewer commissioner that the existing wastewater treatment plant, while maybe not have full capacity for receiving waste, is at close to capacity for treating waste. So if we're talking about acquiring this water system with part of the idea of future development to longer term, which means more water going into the wastewater treatment system, how are we gonna handle that water? If the current wastewater treatment plant is almost near capacity for treatment? And maybe, I don't know, if there's someone from public works who could better explain that concern.
Go to Russo and Public Works, so yeah, they are correct. I'd say we are at capacity for treatment right now, but we are in the middle of a planning study, regardless to deal with the water system. We are working on a planning study correcting some of those issues. Uh, also, to be able to meet the requirements of future permits that come down the road, because the permits become more and more challenging, and the current facility is not permitting those requirements. So regardless of what takes place with the water, there is planning and stu- study going on to identify what is going to need to be done at the water treatment plant, I'm sorry, at the wastewater treatment plant. So regardless of this, the wastewater treatment plant is going to need upgrades.
Dan Boffelosha from Swansea. I, I just wanna say that, um, it's, uh, it's a fifty-two page. About the, that concerns a lot of the work. I support this project more than it is. Uh, it's, it's gonna help out with, uh, future development on, uh, with town development. But, uh, I, I don't think we should rock into efficient, we're dealing with five hundred, I think we should wait until much. I would like to see a lot of from the S, when our actual time, if we can extend it. Be compliant with the, uh, the water supply rule, and tell them that we need another year for proper planning. And that's basically what's, when it gets down to proper planning. Uh, we need to have some study groups or workshop groups, whatever. Uh, in the evenings, uh, a lot, a lot of the old folks travel. We, we shouldn't have some of those in the afternoon, and a lot of the others here are doing it. So I think we need to have a couple, uh, sessions, and maybe one on a Saturday. I would like to see everybody, um, it's gonna affect one part of town, but the whole town is gonna pay for this. So, we, I, I think with all I can know, you know, what's involved here, and to understand it. So that we can, as people come to the meetings, can leave with a positive note, and know what's gonna happen. So that they can tell their neighbors. I would like to see this pass by seventy-seven seconds, if we're doing right. I've smoked my piece.
So I think the main thing I'd like to clarify is, this would be a terrible obligation for the town, the whole town would need to approve the borrowing, but the intent is that it would be a statute for our state very major, which is the other article we'll talk about, is very clear that those expenses need to be separated from the town, town's general, uh, fund, and it can't be co-mangled, so there will be like a cost for the hydrants, like that and shit. But, but in general, it's not something that the whole town can.
So, this is the first time I've heard it, this joke here, Swansea, I just wanna make sure I understand. What you're saying is, the town votes on it. The town only pays five cents of the tax rate. People are really paying for this, sort of a thousand dollars that are used in it, right?
Right.
Is that not some minor standing for everything? Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand, right? It's really the people using it that are paying for it. And that's kind of a weird way to vote. Basically, I'm hoping to pay for somebody to pay more money, that's, that's a weird. Well.
I live in Eastford, you know, I'm.
In the past, we had the district over at Stafford Drive, the town voting for. But the district, the development of it is being paid by the properties on Stafford Drive. And so, I mean, it couldn't happen in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I understand, it's, it's, it's an interesting way to look at it, right? I mean, if, if I'm sitting there, and I'm affected by this, this is a big people. Being right now, it's not, right?
Being right now, it's not, right? That's, that's weird thing.
Yeah, just, uh, so Ben mentioned in this presentation, but just reiterates one of the other points, district ownership problem was maybe here. Ideally, sure, we'd do it here when there's nothing else on the, on the plan, it's not true, then that'll be because the fires, we'll be waiting for the fire station to resolve since I've worked here for ten years, so. Uh, but that funding will not be available, we cannot go for this, if these two articles fail, we can't bring it back. So it's not necessarily a one-time shot, but you can't guarantee a lot of people. Well, Mr. Barker, since he hasn't spoken at all yet.
Just a question about infrastructure that's in place. Studies, I mean, what, what are the mains, what are the? Do they meet current codes, you know, there's a, a thing of operating. Uh, that's an issue, but what's in the ground now and what just it? How does it stand with the current codes for water distribution?
The, the study primarily looked at the pumps and the supply. Uh, we did an inventory, so there's like seven thousand approximately linear feet of pipe. Gas, iron, duct, iron, and it's crust, so that's an inventory, so we didn't. Um, identify that there was a need to replace any piping, piping generally lasts longer than some of the pumps. Some, some of it's newer, so the, the. The piping was built to service, or the, the water system started to sort of roll and mill, and then later was expanded. Um, and it became, you know, residential service, so some of that piping is relatively newer. Uh, the study did do, we did some asset management, so that would protect, you know, further. So, so say, you know, um. Identifying in ten, twenty-year chunks areas of water need to be replaced, that's built into the rate structure. So there would be time for you to build capital reserves to address uh, that part of the system. Um, so the focus was really on getting the um, pump. And wells and water storage tank, uh, so it's turnkey. The, so, so in general, the, the piping is in an acceptable position. The, there is a study being done on the lead services, excuse me, about copper services, so. We're not doing that, but that is being addressed, there's funding for that, it's a separate upgrade.
I, I'm just looking at it as, as long-term cost to the town. You know, it's not, it's not the six point four million dollars. Now, it's the perpetual maintenance and what are, you know, what has to be upgraded. To meet current standards, so to take this open, do we want?
Right, so the six point four is, is make, is what's, to make it turnkey and in addition to, it would be reasonable to accept it. It would be a good idea for the town to take it on, and then it's the rates that the users are paying. When they, you know, turn their faucet on, pay for that water, is building capital reserves for future improvements. Like replacing a pipe later on down, um, so that will be part of it.
Okay, so do we have to meet current standard, if, if the town takes this open and they're changing over here? Does the town have to meet current standards or can that be operated in the condition it's in? Other than pumps, tanks, etc. I mean, not, you know, I, I'm looking at what has to be, there's, there's nothing grandfathered anymore. As far as I know.
The conclusion of, of the report and the study was that it wouldn't be advisable for the town to take it over. As far as the aging pumps and, and all this. This, you know, it has to be, this, this needs to be done, and. So why would they take on a headache of, of a system that is like on its last legs? So, so that's what six point four million is, is to make a turnkey, so it's in a, you know, uh, condition that it's ready for the town. Uh, then operated and uh, you know.
Are there other things that would need to be done?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, no, no.
Us to run it, us being the town of Swanson to run this system. At change of ownership, is the state going to say, now wait a minute? You've got copper services to all of these things, we need to get the, the copper count down. So we want to change the plastic, we've got AC in there, you know, I'm sure there's that though, I'm sure there's. You know, but I'm sure there's AC in there too.
That all, that all, all the other water systems in the state have those too. So, so they're not, there's no mandate, or they're, those are not, the piping does not need to be updated. Or there's, you know, until it just.
I think the question is, right, it was obviously either poorly run as a private company. Or it's not a viable institution, he's asking, is it viable for the comp, the town to run? Are we gonna make enough money to update it, maintain it as we go? That's the question that I would like answered, isn't it a viable company?
Yes, and that, and that was the focus in the outcome of the report, that was the question that, that, that our report was wanting to answer. Um, and so, yes, uh, the conclusion that we came to, um, it's, it's.
I mean, running it by, running it by a town has advantages, we've got a cheap source of capital, right? So with that cheap source of capital, with the rates, is it viable to maintain it, grow it? I mean, I'd like to see all of Swanson have town water, but the question is, is this a viable business? I'm asking you, you guys have come to work, is this a viable business?
I think the difference between a public utilities corporation, or committed whatever, PUC controlled business. Which is a private business.
And it's, you know, profits out, not reinvesting, that's poorly run, question is.
It's actually, it's not poorly run. The only way to do improvements to a PUC-controlled private business utility is to fund it. You, you go out and you borrow the money and do it.
Or you make profits and you reinvest those, right?
They don't allow you to do that. They don't allow you to do capital reserves, you can't raise the rate to put money away for the future. They won't let a business do that, they let it be a spouting. This, that's one of the crazy things PUC does, you have to go, you have to venture capital, you have to go out. You know, if that brown water wanted to do it, they, what's wanting to water, they go out, they put six million dollars into it. Then the PUC looks at the numbers and says you can charge people a thousand dollars more each. So that's the, that's how a private business would have to do it. A municipal can put away money for a rainy day, build like, would be that one.
Uh, so no, it's West Swansea, uh, what is PUC stand?
Public Utilities Commission.
So if we put in that money, the six million into this, are they saying, well, we don't need to sell it anymore?
They won't. They will, we will have bought, we're municipal, so we would deal with the part of the environmental services in the area.
It's what we're voting on, is whether or not we wanna buy and the new profits.
Like Ben said, that's the only way to do it, if we just buy without any improvements. Uh, the report says you shouldn't do it.
So it's a combination of those two things. An increase of a thousand dollars a year seems pretty hefty, and I'm just curious if the current water users are aware of this. Or were involved in all of this, you know, discussion, how they feel about it? And was that an annual increase? I mean, is it gonna be a thousand dollars anymore for number of years for them?
So that's where, that's where we'll ultimately get to, so how the loan works is. You don't, we don't start paying it back until all of the improvements are done, so it's gonna be a several year process. In the meantime, if you start raising the rates more incrementally, start building some capital. So that's it, we just started the median weight amount of love that, not necessarily what, I don't think I have to go increasing to. And uh, it's gonna be several years down the, I assume is the alternative is drill your own well or your own sector. So that's much more than a thousand bucks one year.
And then with this thousand dollar entry, I think, what I'll do, that be. Uh, the flat, it'd be the volume rate and the tax, like the district tax or. And not dependent on the that.
It's, it's based on water, it's based on consumption, on, on your water, whatever your water consumption, so it's, we used to stay out of there if you go to that for. So, so what a typical home would use times, you know, what the um, the, the water rate that's needed. To fund, you know, the debt service on the improvements plus operating expenses, and all that's already built into that, the. Existing rate, so it's the increase for the improvements. But that answers your question, I was just wondering if it's like the district tax involved also.
No, because, so the precinct, great, great, fireworks for the north Swansea water, precinct, they have an additional tax, because it's a part of the town, I can't have. Cannot have a separate additional tax, so it would just be.
It, it, it is worth noting too, though, that, you know, it's like um. More, more users will bring rates down as they're selling the water, so it's. Like right now, it's, it's a little bit of the catch twenty-two, but if you can't put more connections on, you, you know, and then there's. Uh, some sort of failure that requires repair, now you have a rate, you also, that's, it's only on the users that are, that are on there now. You make this investment and then more people can connect and, and start running system. Um, with, with better planning and management, you know, the rates, that'll get spread out over time. Um, so it's not as uh, big of a burden on smaller users.
So what's important thing about this whole thing is root ten, it's a, root ten is where we're gonna grow. And to put businesses or anything on root ten, mainly what we're gonna need is water and the correct correction, am I correct? So that's what we need to sort of take, so basically, if we don't do this, we're kind of holding back through the ten. On bringing in some nice business that will help us with taxes in the future and all this. I feel that, you know, it's gotta happen in one way or another to grow root ten and basically surrounding areas. And when you're talking about raising, we add these businesses on, it'll help out the rates, am I correct?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Kevin, Andrew, Wes Swansea, uh, I just have a question on the loan forgiveness aspect of the. Uh, one, uh, are all three projects acquisition? Pump house, tank, um, subject to that loan forgiveness? And two, if you could very briefly speak to the impact of how that works as a, for example, if it's a. Twenty-five year loan, um, do you stop paying when you've reached three point eight? Million dollars to pay off thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years in that loan, that's just, right? Um, so your first question, um. Sorry, I was kind of logging the answer with yes.
Yeah, it was yes, the, uh, all, all components.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's the six point four million, is, is those three components, and that, that would be the loan amount would be for six point four. And then they take the forty percent off, so you're paying back interest on remaining sixty. And the loan works like a construction loan, so everything we budgeted, it's, it'd be a thirty-year loan. Um, just over three percent of the numbers that we're using, and then. Um, you know, it can be amortized like your mortgage payment is, or um, the. Numbers that we ran are, are level payments, so it's uh, you, you, you pay a level principal. And then the interest payments decrease over the course of the way that they apply, so. So it sounds like it's still be for the full term of the loan, you don't just stop paying part of it as you reach development, the, the, the total capital. Ode will be reduced in fact.
Yeah, yeah, so they adjust the principal.
This one's for you. There was also included in this West Swansea water thing, two and a half million to run a pipe up Route Ten. So that's pretty good to North Manchester period, has that been?
So that's kind of the third article, we kind of believe this, the tech district, so that would be funded out of the. If that would happen, that would be through the tech district. That's not included.
Okay, I just wondered where.
Few years ago. We ran into something, there is, we just, whatever that called storage there, that, this. They couldn't open their business because we didn't have enough water supply, going out to that, that vent ended up. I don't know, because they were shy out of, uh, but they had to increase their investment. Inadequately, polishing something. In order to run, run a business, so if you don't have the. Doesn't all good to have a, have the well, just a water field. Where you really need the volume, uh. If you wanna see the growth, and I. I, I, man, I think it both should go together, is what I get at. So, I don't know, it's a lot of money. There should be some plans in place. And learn what's, you know, so many, treat a pipe per year. We wanna put in, put this amount of money. Because, you know, we're still, if you look out the window. We've got a wonderful mill that's still sitting here, my understanding. The places that wanted to go in there, but they didn't have it out of the water. So, you know, we're in a tax-free country. Situation, so. Some ideas on that.
That's why I need to recover, it's gonna be the pressure, you saw that, uh, we're basically adults, it's useless, it's, it's useless. Basically, right?
Oh, so it gets as well.
So the specific to water lines or anything, rather.
Yes, I'm working away, East Road. My second time to one of these meetings, and I'm concerned for the voter. They just wanted to do a reassessment, they saw the value of the home change, they saw the tax change, some of that part of it. Some maybe not as much. We need to look at what does the town really need and what's going to be important, what can it pass? Now, the fire station, I think it's number. The water system, I think is nice, but I'm afraid we're gonna scare the voter, so he's going to say. But I don't want anything, and you're not gonna get anything. So I don't know if you've reached out to the voters individually, if you have a discussion, asking what do you want? And if you haven't, your presentation is nice, but we need one more. If you do all of this, this is what will happen to your tasks altogether, not individual, but all together. That's not common. I don't know if this might have, have done.
I think Mike does a real good job putting together the voter guide for us and. I believe they'll put in dollar figures, or if you vote for this, this is gonna happen to your.
Will you send this out to the pot, before it's time to go and vote?
Yeah.
We'll discuss it a little bit later tonight as well, so, but tell me, maybe we can get better, because we think what we spoke right now.
Oh, for water, you find that interesting questions. All right, we'll go on to the next one, we're just still in the event, so in fact, you're not leaving yet. So this is another one, yeah, I won't read it, it looks, it looks like it is authorities to borrow funds, but it's really effectively a grant, because it's what the state calls. Principal forgiveness, again, similar to the uh, fourth one, the other, except this team will pull out. So we jump to the next one. Yeah, so it's a stormwater capital improvement plan, improve the loan, but with principal forgiveness, so there's suspected fee. No direct tax, great impact in twenty twenty five, because you have to borrow the fund before they forgive it, they're likely going. I will throw a probably small number, but a very small number, not interest, but the cost is going to be very nice.
You got a problem.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, um, as you know, I'm all for stormwater management, but I'm just curious, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars doesn't sound like much for stormwater management. I'm just curious what this is supposed to cover.
Right, yes, we can jump right into that, um. So so the hundred thousand dollars basically is to fund a um, report, a um. Comprehensive stormwater relief plan. Basically, the town has stormwater infrastructure all over in in various conditions, um, much of it's accounted for. The, you know, condition may not be totally understood in in every location, and then in some cases, maybe it's also um, connected or. Um, associated with other infrastructure, so the idea of a- and and also connected to then resources as well. So the idea of the plan is to look at that all together and be able to make informed decisions about, um. You know, infrastructure that's that's improved or or prioritizing, um, which improvements, um, kind of from a holistic approach. So, I mean, for example, there's a lot of flooding here um, last summer. And so we go, we have roads or we have collars that need to be replaced. Um, but if we're thinking then about which ones have flooding history and we also are thinking about what are the downstream um, impacts. You know, one over the other, um, so this would kind of go complementary with like the road C I P um, plan as well. Um, so there were. Replacing infrastructure once and not having to come back to it, and that is also um, using funds sufficiently and um. You know, so it's a framework and decision making.
Those may benefit in other ways, the side is getting banned.
That's right, yeah, so that's the other piece is that, you know. And down the road, when once the projects are kind of identified and once the priorities are known, um, having that report gives you a leg up on. Uh, the funding opportunities that will come out, because it's documented, it's supported, there's basis for the need. Um, so that primarily is through the um, Clean Water S R F. Um, and and how doing some of those currently now, so that'll be for the future, but there's other programs as well, where that would become a useful tool.
Yeah, I was thinking, I think that could have been awarded of most of those million dollars over the last three years, including. Out for industry, some of that money is through this program, so that's in my mind, the part of the big south, it's additional grant opportunity. Kind of compliment, we do a road project, how do we get some money from the same power plant on the stormwater.
Which i- in the D S funds have become competitive, more competitive, um, so they have a scoring matrix, and so to hit, you know, all points on scoring matrix having. Um, a report like this would allow you to score well.
So this week's report will cover water quality as well as quantity.
Yeah, and 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 it's kind of inventory resource, it's it'll be townwide, um, so, yes.
All right, this is really a lot to get past, I guess, you can see this like. We all, so. Kind of into our, kind of regularly scheduled, I recently the first kind of call last couple of years, not beautiful, but. Uh, so all right, the seven, the town operating budget, you can see the numbers there, so we're looking at a total. Uh, budget for twenty twenty five, eight point seven million dollars. Default budget, so that part will be slowed it down, default budget, since we set it over nine hundred, maybe five. Okay, that's something, increase over twenty twenty four of nine point three percent, some of those factors, what's what's contributing to that. Um, then the default budget is actually a little bit lower than I can gloss here, uh, we have one election in twenty twenty five instead of four in. And for the best debt service, it paid off. Some of the major increases of personnel administration, uh, Mill Dally probably heard it, not using too many higher people and costs, higher people is a decrease. Uh, so that's all wages and then associated costs, the hiring, competition, um, similar to something like that. Uh, insurance, health insurance continues to increase, workers comp liability, all of our uh, insurance is increasing. Police department, that's a department where we had to make some larger than other departments market based adjustments, um. Fire department increases, primarily associated with part time positions, part time payroll, instead of adding full time. Positions that no additional full time position for the fire department. Um, public works, they are adding additional heavy equipment operators to continue to do more projects that have to be, um, some of those disaster, like the picture we showed earlier. Also winter operations are obviously important, uh, so adding a position there. General assistance, representative roads, people here, support here, it started, um, talked a little bit about that, but uh, it's really been a struggle for. First one, they didn't figure that house, house votes, uh, with not a lot of right flow, departments, right go locations, uh, costs are increasing. And the recreation department is adding additional part time. Again, the election previously is a line that's decreasing and then we have a question for. This uh, group of these meetings, fortunately, that's pretty reasonably lost effective, so we're going to produce that. Again, this is just the summary. Rather than the jury's freezing slightly, but unfortunately, the budget's being, the overall budget increased, so that's sort of act rated back to justify it over again, but again. Block like, there is anything after this, put that. So that's a breakdown, you can probably see it better in the handout, hopefully it's not put on. Um, so this kind of shows you the bubble pieces, the police department, seventy percent of revenue coming here. Uh, I believe the fire department is the three million spread out mixed with another large, um, one of the bottom left categories in street, so it just gives you a sense of that total town tax bill. Twenty seven percent of your total tax bill, how that gets broken up between the different departments. Excellent, so dark, uh, we can act with a whole detail, I think it's thirty two acres, I think that's a good deal on that line, yeah, that is a. And that's the revenue piece, largely consistent property taxes of, um, traditional method of. Remember the housing expenses, the other big revenue, the motor vehicle registration, so that's a great puzzle. I'm ready to hear what you. Questions or feedback on the budget before we.
If you were to take off this one, the general opinion on the nine plus percent increase, I don't feel like we're gonna get past. We're asking for a big capital, we're asking for a nine plus percentage increase on our general, you know, the other big numbers must be. The school district's asking for something like a three percent, four percent, plus the teacher's contract of five and a half percent, five twelve percent in the first year, you may even get everything. And so just by way of forecast, this is the hearing, I'm not asking questions on this delivery, I think that's what we're doing. Um, I'm delivering a forecast for uh, February fourth, I would make a motion to change that number to be more in align with something at one point four percent increase. Where you get it from is not up to me, of course, it's up to your team, but I think that we have a better chance of having to be some improvement versus the default budget, which I think. You and me all need that. Whether we, whether I can, will want to pay for it or not, I don't think we'll get it, I think this will set us up. More well, we'll get a fire station, but we'll get a default budget, and then you'll be suffering for some things that we need or want to do. Or whether it's really pay or hire people, put in new programs in place, so I really think some things that are over four percent is a tripwire for certain people. Especially for younger bands. So that's a forecast, and what I'll be delivering on Wednesday the fourth, that's just a question for the number of lines, thanks for listening.
Questions, just, I don't think we've put forward this request lately, certainly. Look like it's been less.
I agree, Mike, uh, I don't doubt.
With that, we jump forward to the next article, the next couple of articles are related, um, so we have two articles that are funding our capital reserve, spending the council funds. This gives you a breakdown, what's going into each different fund. So unlike the budget, which is a lump sum, just about the mention of these other articles, uh, there's specific amounts associated with specific things, so this says fire trucks, thirty thousand. Passive collect, we can't decide on a hundred thousand, those line items are binding. So the next one. First with two, part of the six year plan, ongoing on the capital improvement plan, giving. Some of the major changes off to our reduction, so now season, Union Library had a, was increased last year as part of our renovation project. At least one phase of that completed, there will be third, about fifty thousand less than last year. Another item of sea freezing is the contributions by Goldenrod, Grange Hall, uh, down there, so that's kind of. Matching funds to help uh, fund the foundation, working that building, so it'll be hopefully matching plans. Uh, Wickham Hall, after this lovely project was completed a few years ago, the fountain were done, and now of course, seeing maintenance, so uh, we got quotes for painting last year, which were crazy. Uh, so we think it has an additional class to make sure the next year it's painted before it's being brushed shades. And what's like, what's that, kind of similar to Wickham Hall, we did a big upgrade, I'm sure it goes there, uh, those, but now some of those kind of. New chain, they're inside, probably back up, so we're gonna serve on the, not terrible as well.
On the cash reserve, well, do you have a slide that shows what they're known now?
I don't have a slide, but if you have it in your hand, so we're on the last page. So it's over the last five years, it's been going into the funding, and then this last call activated balance. Be assessed here as of about four fifteen, I have director that is. But that shows the balance of the most. Questions on this article? On the next one, the next one, it's the same idea, it's, it's road infrastructure, it's like particles or capital reserve funds. So the type of equipment, bridges, sidewalks, facilities, from the reconstruction and the relatives. So, treat similar to last year, that's ten thousand dollars, uh, I think that's maybe it's, I don't know, I think that I've been talking before. Uh, cover bridges, that amount is. All associated to camera projects, so we've been working on the last couple of years, so we did cameras, uh. Uh, for the Crescent Bridge, looking to do the other ones, and painting is expensive, that painting is expensive, so they're, they're pretty high. Town dams with us, maybe help Google some funds, I can't, we do a one more dance, she's want to relate them, we have some seed money and fund engine here, so. Yeah, so this is our kind of fire station contingents, the point of everything, so. Article four, which is the bond fails, uh, this article will save three hundred thousand dollars towards. For the project, so just a more than ten, looking back, just passing the fire station passing, or basically saying, save on three hundred thousand a year depending. Or you want to prove the the last couple of years, you said you want to save. Um, so last year, based on him, it's a delivery session, you know, like two hundred thousand, so three hundred and two hundred, so we have five hundred in there now. It's half funded by taxation and half from the one balance, which what we, I don't expect the whole budget, we don't require revenue, so those places, top talent, so we can get better towards. Events like this, or overland factory, and we did all those stuff here. This passes, and then everyone passes, they don't all feel any effect, but our corporate government, you can have what they call a continued, part of it will still pay on. Well, it's a lot earlier, so definitely not gonna read that a lot of kind of quiet, but it was very short, this, uh, this year we had a. West Swansea Tiff District Advisory Committee, so Tiff is T I F, it's kind of third taxing for the financing, and that was a committee of, uh. A lot of people in this room, actually, say it's not, you know, like, yeah. Um, so they reviewed the area, again, similar to the water company, but not, um. Not fully the same, they're looking at capital needs in that area, three ten between north, North Manchester, so Northern Chester three. And trying to identify areas that could have commercial development, and what the town could do, um, without burdening the taxpayers to hold and thought to that. So Swansea has one tax improvement financing district now, which is uh, separate design area, so it's Swansea Revenue Development District. And that's how Saff to Drive was built, gone analog tech. Well, the houses project is gonna be in the Tiff district. So basically, we can borrow a pub, build that road, and the new development will pay it off. Uh, so that district is about ready to be completed, and we're kind of looking at the next phase, which we see in this area of Route Ten, as the next opportunity. So the primary public uh, function that we funded are waterline extensions, which is what Mr. Rock Fair mentioned. Uh, potential sewer extensions and or sewer treatment upgrade, so even if the water system doesn't move forward, but this article gets approved. If new development comes in that area, that can go to hell, pay towards the sewer. Uh, if the water system gets approved, it can go towards expected water, and some of those commercial properties that that. So no direct tax impact, it's not appropriating any money, but what this article does is basically freezes. The values around that area, and any increases can go towards the savings account to pay towards these improvements. So they don't pay more taxes if you're in the district, it just goes towards these projects, they end up not doing any projects, the one you'll eventually just go back into the general problem.
Is it basically set aside as a separate entity then, so that, so any any increase in valuation from. Whenever this happens? Yeah, so any increase in valuation? That amount of money, the taxes garnered from that amount? Goes into a separate entity?
Separate account.
It's separate account, okay, um, and so is used only for improvements in that district? Whatever they see.
Whatever they see outlined in the financing plan, so there's, I think, an over thirteen page uh, development and financing plan. development and financing plan, it's on the website, or you can go, visit, go look down, all development, so we can't decide, okay, we wanna go the fire station, that's not developed, it's always specific. Water, sewer, construction, all of this in there, could be amended later, we decide, okay, the water didn't happen. We want to do something else in the future, the body can amend it.
Okay, so it's not relying on the water company and this Tiff district, are not relying on each other then, correct?
Either the government or the
Okay. It's new, it's two, new projects, correct? Not just increases, it's anything to do with each, or if somebody comes in, moves in, runs someone property, all that.
Like the actual thing, too, that could yes, they have progress, so it's too great, but it's indirectly relying on one another, because they're procuring the water, and they and that being operated allows water services to grow up, or tend to the properties that we should develop. Yeah.
I think we'll locate a map that shows the boundaries of the Tiff district, can you, is it includes, is it just Route Ten, or does it actually include part of Northern South Winchester Street?
Second, or Northern South Winchester Street?
So what's currently residential will be included in the Tiff district?
Correct, because it has to be contiguous, so you can just pick out spots here or there.
That's kind of, that's changing the neighborhood.
It doesn't, how also?
Well, because isn't the Tiff district to develop? So how does this work with our current zoning then? I mean, does that change the uses? Oh, it doesn't. So so it's residential stays residential, doesn't mean that we're gonna be asking for development on Winchester Street?
Yeah, that'll industrial part, it's that's incredibly fun. That won't change the zoning at all, all the zoning stays exactly as it is, unless the town, they're zoning that town meeting. But all that zoning changes there, it's just that those properties are included in that district. Any evaluation, both that baseline of that date, even though it's residential or commercial, will go towards the Tiff district for infrastructure. But again, the zoning stays the same.
So if I have a house on Northern Winchester Street, and I'm paying taxes now to the general, you know, town budget. Instead, my taxes will go to the Tiff district?
Your baseline goes to the general fund, and the improvements to it after that date, say there you're, you're paying five hundred dollars more taxes after that date, that portion would go into the Tiff district, the rest of the baseline, whatever you're paying, goes to the general fund. And only the funds can they reassess, so if your house is reassessed for the five hundred dollars, if you reassess it six hundred on later date, that extra hundred thousand dollars that you're being tagged goes there, the five hundred still stays to the town. It's just when they reassess. Before you build a new house, even though it's not a great, but a new house, you can pay a point instead of that. But it doesn't, the taxes are no different, or it's just where it goes first. Excite the models on the
Yeah, so some of the money, instead of going to the town, just goes to this district, which would support improvements for the development of Route Ten.
And your house on North Winchester might benefit from improved water and spilling. So you're getting some benefit from it too. You know, it's not just for industry, it's business.
So if, if the development required improvements in the wastewater treatment plant. So as a resident on Winchester Street, I would be benefiting from that, but as a resident on Spring Street, that improvement, I mean, I, I ain't got nothing to do with the need for that increase in the treatment, water treatment plant. So who pays for that increase? The, the Tiff district or all of the water users, I mean, all the wastewater users?
Well, I don't know if there are any wastewater people outside of the promotes this, this district, or it can affect the whole thing.
Yes.
I know, I know, yes, well, lagoons are in the Tiff district, I don't think every time.
So the user would pay, but the people in the Tiff district, just the portion of the increase in value, they're not gonna pay anymore. It's just instead of going to the regular Swansea backs, a little piece of it's gonna go to the Tiff. Or pay back some of the improvements.
So we're talking sewer treatment though, and there's an increase in development on Route Ten, which increases water use, which means we need to increase our wastewater capability. Is I on Spring Street might end up paying more for my wastewater treatment than I currently am because of the increased use from Route Ten.
Well, Joe, I think said was even without the Tiff district, we're gonna have to make improvements in the sewer plant.
Well, that's what the, the report we're trying to find out, but so I guess.
So you could, you could either pay for it all over yourself, or the Tiff district could develop and help soften the blow, and pay hopefully the majority of it.
Well, what I'm hearing is that currently, the wastewater treatment land is handling what it needs to handle at this point in time. It's increases in, that are going to be causing an increase in the size or the need for treatment, so right now if it stayed as it is, there would be no need to increase the capacity of the wastewater treatment.
Next year, the EPA could say we have to do a little improvement.
So he's correct there, so right now, the, the plant is managing what is coming in for flows, ensuring there is more capacity in the plant, but unfortunately, whether the system's being operated right now, it's not free, and even with the company adding. But the EPA continually changes the permitting, and we continually get warned by D E S that there's strong likelihood that we won't be able to meet the requirements of the next permitted mandate. So sooner or later, regardless of the water system, the plant is going to need some upgrades. The question is going to be how much, and that's what that planning study, we received a grant, the planning study being done by a grant, that's gonna be able to identify more of that. But they're making it so more and more stuff has to be tested for in certain requirements, those requirements are becoming more difficult and difficult to meet.
So well, Joe was distracting you, I got the map, I love, so up in the kind of northwest part is a viewpoint for kind of reference. This area over here in the kind of top ray is the intersection with North Winchester Street, comes down Route Ten. Ending is an area of Evergreen though. You know, past Evergreen, in the area just before Kindred. So this is the lagoons right here, around the right side. Harry Lee is over here on the left side, so it kind of goes up, the one they include viewpoint, for two reasons, why that's a possible location for the storage tank for the system that we end up putting in the West Swansea water company, you have to put that up there. So they'd be user-privileged system. And also somewhere could end up around here, so it's trying to give us some options, I can't remember, but different facilities, and over here is the Homestead Wall, that was discussed. It's not necessarily all, I think there's like you mentioned, Barbara, there's some sewer users over on the ski side of the river, so they're not included in the proposed district of this area. And these districts could only be so big, both in terms of acreage and assess now, so you can't have the whole town in this district.
Wow.
I have a question, Joe. What do you lean towards itself, in the lagoon or?
No, not leaning towards anything, that's what the planning studies, engineers are looking at and seeing what is, they're seeing what they can do about correcting some of the treatment issues, so we can make an improvement on the flows there, and then they were taking a look at all the infrastructure to see what will be upgraded, what will need to be upgraded.
I mean, but, but looking for additional flow. Not a lagoon, or?
That's what they're looking at. They're, they're looking at that, that's one of the considerations as well, is, is would it be more cost effective with the flows we own? Out of key facility, running up sewer main to connect West Swansea, to North Swansea, and the Keans flows, they're looking at all of that.
Scott, are you trying to go all the way, with that, with that, are you trying to go all back, are you?
No. No, I wouldn't want to speak to that, a lot, a lot to it.
Okay, Bruce?
Everything we're so ahead of, I'm going to, I know, I was hoping you were gonna jump in. No. No, I'm, I'm here to go.
I was just gonna say, Scott, you're the former many year operator of the plant, you told me about another, some place they write, it's more like without the treatment.
Yeah, it'd be, and it'd be pretty much likely that they wouldn't put any lagoon in there, because they're inefficient as far as the size of the area that it takes up there, they'd probably put in a, a water can to process down there. To treat, the flow coming in, they can treat a lot more on a smaller area than a process like, for instance, the city of Venus. So it's probably gonna be like that, but it is that, it's that, I mean, it's loading capacity, what they call loading capacity, but not design capacity. And that's the difference there, and Joe was talking about the permits that the state is bringing on to us, and all, all the smaller areas there, looking at glass, and that fossil, first one, which is pretty much lower than the capacity of our system, what I have, that we create for fossils, they're gonna have all the things coming there. Maybe copper, maybe other elements are a lot better, it's a big lot. Now, regardless of the fit or anything else going in there.
So we are getting most of you done, all aggressively, oh, do you want to speak to, yes, Chris?
No, I, I'm just saying goodnight, I'm very tired.
So this is the other article I teased earlier, so this is the second part, so to the West Swansea Water Company acquisition side. If the other article passes, this one fails. Does not move forward. If this one passes, if the other one fails, we can still address reconsider the funding piece, that's the next opportunity. So these two are definitely tied together. Ultimately, they will, they pass, so. So that was the other piece that we told you through earlier about this failed, helping roll back again for three years, so it's not regarding the next year already. And again, the rear end expenses for the water system, they have to be as low as possible, and we have to be accountable for it. Uh, I'm sure they have a special, so I think a thirteen is appropriated hundred thousand, that's why you got. With the, so a hundred thousand dollars towards the annual expendable trust fund, which we created last year. So we currently have a contract with Chester EMS, run through Judge, by Judge Academy. It goes through another year and a half, goes through June thirty, April twenty six. The curve rates are significantly subsidized, they're shown here, even with the select board a couple weeks, month or so ago, and more or less, which is not a big surprise, but more or less of that. When that contract ends, we're looking at significant more than one. So to start to prepare for that, we started the fund last year, we're now putting more into it, now that we see what those dollars are going to cost. So this is really just to try to smooth the transition into higher costs. Right, so this is re-adopting a tax exemption that the town has had now for five years for commercial and industrial properties, so gives this law, the ability, there's public benefit, to waive a portion of the taxes towards new commercial industrial association, potentially, and the incentive. So it's kind of gives this law kind of a tool in their toolbox of say, developers, people purchase the town, they'd really like to locate here, but they need some, some incentives. The town, that gives us some flexibility, the answer here, the Midwest places give free taxes, the businesses, when they move, we don't have, you know, huge tools like that, which I think overall is okay. But this does give us one tool to use to try to credit, well. We have approved in the next draft, we approved only two of those so far, so it's not like we're in the town. Give it away, the rates dollars, two hundred, complications, but have all the characters of the building.
How long, it, it's just for five years, yours, is that a enormous, the tax exemption for individual businesses, or is that the duration of this article?
A second, it's the duration of each five years, it has to be authorized.
Okay.
Exemption can be up to ten.
The exemption can be up to ten years, at a set percent?
Yeah, up to, we had that, and we took it out, it was even longer, I believe, yeah, it was up to fifty percent.
Up to fifty percent? Up to fifty percent for a maximum of ten years, and then taxes could be based on full valuation after that.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, the two were approved, and the Homestead Wall, and then the property with the two. So we're into the petition articles, so this will compare to petition articles. Are you favor increasing or it's elected to five in person? So we currently have three, this one gentleman here, and this is a word, this article is required by statute, so cannot be handed as a prologue or a summary. It's a petition trying to increase it, disciplines. Next one is also petition article, so I will be getting second hole in place, promoting here at the hall. So an appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the cost, what kind of should appropriate? My voice, my voice is old.
I asked him to burn it for volume.
We had a lot of, Ben took it.
Two of the voting machines, the ballot box was twelve thousand six hundred dollars. The annual service on the two machines is seven hundred and fifty dollars. Programming for election, which I think they could do all for already. The four machines, it says quantity one five hundred, so that's two to five hundred, two thousand. The voting booths are thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty one bucks for the panel. Supplies, five hundred bucks. Probably an annual fee. And food for the election workers, about three hundred dollars, and election salaries are about seven hundred and fifty dollars. So if we double it, I don't think the fifteen thousand would do it, especially in four years. When we have four elections. The next year will be the first year, and that would be three elections. The primaries, the state election, and the annual.
Michael, Heather's on her way, if anybody has questions for her.
Heather's on her way.
Oh.
Uh so where we have the petition article and some non-money articles, uh this information based on the. And the impact, three thousand dollar house, uh everything where the pass had been increased to twenty three, or a hundred and sixty six dollars. Next step, where you get to all the legislators in deliberative session, they're going to make amendments, discussion, vote on articles. Set the clock right here, and then tomorrow, and then the voting day, where those articles they voted on, it's Tuesday, or Monday, that would be the case.
How you doing, Keith?
Have a good one.
It were all in this show, so we have a spur of the moment. Yeah, we have, we have.
Thanks for the flowers. I didn't know it was up there today, but I don't make sense of power of forty. Yeah, I got it, it's like. The level's okay. No, there is that data about. Now it's supposed to tell me, now life is gonna be this down. But you need to try and expect me right now, because I gave this price. Um you know, average seventy, what you might find out that the voices say. What we get those all, I'm in the trap. So that's. Hey, when you taking a couple breakfasts? I'm getting a little tired of this spot. Did you see my picture of me, uh breakfast, I said that's gonna be me like. Then they were often a few younger. Yeah, you got on the beach of the land. I could tell you that.
That's all I do, verification, what Evan told me about the second recent little game show last week. Which is the words like the location, and the words.